I guess since Al and Wayne are not going to be here.
It's your show, Mr. Schuman.
Well, every time I get confused, I'm just going to call.
Oh, that's right, Al is not going to be here.
That's right.
Yeah, I knew Wayne wasn't, and I started out.
Yeah, I know.
So, it's about 5:30, why don't we go ahead and get started?
He said, sir, they had a good conversation.
I'm going to call the July meeting of the Town of Abingdon, Virginia Planning Commission to order. As you can see, I'm not Wayne Austin, I'm Kenny Schuman, I'm the vice chair, and I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. Mr. Boswell, could you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sproles?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Bradley is absent. Mr. Marini?
Here.
Mr. Schuman?
Here.
And Mr. Austin is absent. We do have corn.
Okay. Next order of business is the approval of minutes from the June 24, 2019 meeting, and I assume everybody's had an opportunity to look at those. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I have a change. Under D1, next slide paragraph says, Mr. Wilson noted that under federal law, contractor must subside to the jobs they blah blah. Should say, under federally funded contracts.
Okay.
Which would be under federal law, technically.
Well, yeah.
I know, I was kidding. It is more specific.
Federally funded contracts, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other changes or additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion that the minutes be approved as amended?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, you have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next order of business is public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to make, from the public, that would like to make a comment? If not, we'll move on to the next item, certificate of appropriateness. The first one is the application for certificate of appropriateness, GC Pizza Hut REO Holdings LLC, 116 Radio Circle Drive, Suite 200, Mount Kisco, New York, 10549. Owner, Stephen K. Hutton, 245 East New Street, Suite 201, Kingsport, Tennessee, 37660. Representative, COA for site work in building a proposed Pizza Hut restaurant facility as indicated on submitted drawings located at the Meadows Development Lot 9. Mr. Boswell, do you want to describe the project?
Yes, sir. This will be located on parcel nine, which we will also be hearing a proposed preliminary subdivision of parcel nine. So this will be on the western section of Lot 9, as it is currently situated. This is a Pizza Hut carryout facility only, there will be no dining in the facility, and this is their new trademark building.
From my review of the submission, it appears that it qualifies within the agreement between the town and the developer, the Meadows, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak to that proposal? How do you want to come forward and give us your name and address and?
I'm Steve Hutton, I'm actually an architect, I don't own this stuff. I don't think about making pizzas. Now, this is a Pizza Hut prototype design, with the exception of the, I guess, the thing we've done differently is this rear wall, this area back here, to get the required amount, required, excuse me, required amount of exterior stone material. It's a, like I said, it's a carryout only, there's about three or four chairs in there where you wait, go in and wait for your pizza, or there's a drive-through window on the rear side of this, you can drive through and pick up your pizza, and that's, that's about it.
Mr. Boswell, do the number of parking spaces suit the requirement for the design?
Yeah, yes, sir, Mr. Schuman, they are well beyond what the minimum requirement.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hutton?
I just want to know where it is in relation to anything else out there.
Well, this would be Pals.
Oh, okay, that's all I need to know.
On the other side of that empty area is where the Holiday Inn Express is, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's the Holiday Inn Express.
Okay.
And I'm not familiar where Pals is located, this is my first meeting in relation to the existing Food City Building, where is that, those things now?
This curve right here is the, where you loop around the Pals, so it's probably about right there.
Okay.
If you're coming into the project on the new route, Pals is the first lot on your right, so this would be the second lot on your right, and Food City existing on your left. And Eastman Credit Union would be taking the first out parcel on the left, directly adjacent from, across from Pals. So this lot is across from where the gas is going, in fact.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I do have a question, maybe it's for Jason. On the porcelain stone, that sign right there, is that, that's an acceptable material?
A secondary.
For a sec, a secondary material, so as long as that and the stone brick is more than 30%, then we're okay.
The original site plan that Mr. Hutton submitted, it had stone work on it, but we didn't feel like it had enough. I contacted Mr. Hutton, asked him to add more stone work, take away some of the fiber cement siding, and he obviously did that, and we are satisfied with what he was, and the fact that it complies with the restrictive governance.
Any other addition, any other additional comments, questions? Is there a motion in regard to the certificate of appropriateness?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. You want to make a motion to approve it?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve this COA. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, Mr. Hutton. Okay, the next order of business is application for certificate of appropriateness, Merithon Realty Corporation, PO Box 1158, Abingdon, Virginia, 24212. Owner, COA to subdivide property into two parcels containing 1.221 acres, and the second one containing 1.461 acres located at the Meadows Development Lot 9, tax map ID 021-8-9. Do you want to describe that for us, Mr. Boswell?
Yes, sir, it's subdivision of Lot 9 into two parcels, 1.221 acre plus or minus, and the other east parcel would be 1.461 acre plus or minus. The town staff feels that it is in compliance with the subdivision ordinance, particularly that the improvements have already well, well been made, the sound from crack and gutter, and obviously there's a better parcel.
And this is actually the parcel 9A is where the Pizza Hut is going to be, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
This request is too many.
You want to come up and just introduce yourself and?
Stephen Spangler with Merithon Realty Corporation, but part of this, obviously, is to supplement the Pizza Hut submittal. We have a contract under parcel A to Mr. Hutton's group, and then we also have a contract on the second parcel that this would create, the 9B. That will be coming at a later, later planning commission date.
Okay. Are there questions or comments for Mr. Spangler? Mr. Boswell, you say that this takes care, meets all of the requirements for the subdivision ordinance, is that correct?
This was an easy one, Mr. Schuman.
Yeah, I was going to second. Any additional questions or any questions? Is there a motion regarding this certificate?
I mean, that we kept.
Okay, a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Is there any additional discussion?
I actually have, I have one additional question and discussion.
Okay.
Can I bring it in?
Sure.
Because I'm not as familiar with stormwater around here, is the stormwater, are they all, they're inlets, I hear that they're all coming out to?
Yes, that was part of the overall development.
Okay, that's right, that's what I thought. So there's no detention required on any of these lots?
It's master detention.
That's what I thought. It's part of that master detention, okay, got you. That answered my question.
Okay. All right, any additional questions? If not, there's motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Do me a favor and make sure Mr. Austin knows that we disposed of that business within 10 minutes of calling the tour. I just need to make sure he knows that.
We might actually let you take the chair of the chair. That was an easy one. I gave them both.
Yeah, I didn't show up for the hard one. All right, the next order of business is discussion, comprehensive plan update.
Mr. Schuman, if you don't mind, I will go in front here. Comprehensive plan update, Mr. Cowhen from HPR has experienced some major family issues with his son. His son is currently in Philadelphia, going through more aggressive or rigorous radiation chemotherapy. But I've been in contact with Vlad, and the vision and goal statement that I've sent to the planning commission, it seems like that will be what we're going with. And then we will be scheduling a public meeting for the transportation plan, it'll be the upcoming, what we'll be talking about. So that hopefully will be scheduled. Should be talking with Vlad this week, and scheduling within the next month or so. And that's all I have on the comprehensive.
Okay, the next order of business is the zoning ordinance update.
Yes, sir.
And that's what you, does anybody have a copy?
I should have two copies there in front of me. Went back and re-listened to the last planning commission meeting, and I think we addressed what the concerns were as far as the entrance corridor requirements were. I gave you two copies, the one with the pink highlight is with the information as part of the ordinance, but it seemed as if the consensus of the planning commission was the one that's not highlighted, which would be the design guidelines being a completely separate document, as it is in the Alderman Store District currently. So if there are any questions or any concerns, or you want to see anything added or deleted, now's the time, because we'd really like to get this in front of you all at next month's meeting as public hearing to make a recommendation to the town.
So you want us to take this with us and review it, or how do you want to?
It's the same exact information that I gave you at the last planning meeting.
Oh, okay.
And it didn't seem like there was a whole lot of revision. I know Mr. Bradley had made mention of possibly putting in language that's concerning the color. We had color in there, but we could always add or appropriate historic color palette.
But is that, is that if, if we have the separate standalone guidelines, is that what you're saying?
That's what Mr. Bradley was referring to.
So if we adopt the version that, when they're separate from the, so sort of like we do with the historic preservation board?
Exactly.
There is a standard, standard set of guidelines, but they have a separate set of review guidelines?
Yes, sir.
If there wanted to be discussion later on about modifying the color or whatever the design, you could, the planning commission could do that.
The planning commission could do that.
If we decide to adopt the one that's part, that incorporates that into the actual code, then that could still be adopted now, but later on we could decide to amend it, or we could decide to change it now.
Correct.
And include it in there now. So that, that's the discussion that we had at the last meeting, was whether we were going to incorporate those design review guidelines in the code itself versus having a separate standalone set of review guidelines.
As long, I mean, I guess my thought would be, as long as there are guidelines, and you, and you have the opportunity as the planning commission to review the guidelines, so let's say that somebody wanted a variance for the guidelines, that would be my question is, you know, if we, if we make it too, too black or white, you get to where, you know, you may create a problem. So I guess my question would be, should, should there be something in there in regard to a variance so that you wouldn't, every time you, let's say an issue came up and you would say, okay, I don't want to, I don't want to change the guidelines, but I want to consider this request?
Well, I think there's a mechanism to do that, but one thing I was talking about, there is a mechanism to do that in, in the, in section, I can't remember which section that is. It was?
Should be in 18.
18, oh, actually, it got changed in the revised one, but I think the other one still needs to say six to one.
It's in 1899.
Yeah, it says four to one, but that's the original version that needs to go.
The law says six to one, so you must have got it.
The one that was highlighted.
Oh, I'm talking about the one that's not highlighted.
Yeah, the one that's not highlighted, it says six to one, but if we do this one.
Okay, yeah.
You're right, the one that's not highlighted, isn't it?
I see what you're saying, provided by either a four to one or unanimous vote of the planning commission, they elect to disregard any guideline that considers unimportant or inappropriate to a particular project, so that does take care.
Right, now, just so I can distinguish between that one, one version got changed to six to one, the other one needs to be changed to six to one, that's okay, we can fix that. The, the one that Jason has that's not highlighted, it's the same version except the design review guidelines are in the end, that would be the starting point of where the planning commission could adopt these design review guidelines. This part about the six to one, that to me would be applicable to this section, because there are separate set of review guidelines. When I talked to Jason before the meeting briefly, was if we put, if we incorporate the design review guidelines in this one that's highlighted, and they're actually a part of it, I don't think the planning commission can waive something if it's in the code.
And I agree with Mr. Marini.
So we would have to probably maybe reward that a little bit, but I think based on the last meeting, the consensus, at least of the planning commission, was to go with the separate set of design review guidelines. And if that's the case, we don't necessarily have to worry about that right now, and this language would suffice. That was just my opinion on it, so.
I agree.
Okay. If that's what we're looking to, the direction we're looking to go, so.
Yeah, that takes care.
And that's, and that's what.
Yeah, I'm not concerned, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like it's a little bit cleaner of a process in the historic district, and we touched on that last time at the last meeting, for the board members or the commission members to have the opportunity to change or and or alter the guidelines and, instead of having to go back and amend the ordinance every time something's changed. So I mean, it is up to the commission, but I felt like the consensus of the last meeting was that you would like to see it as a separate document.
Questions?
I do have one thing, I, just going back from what, from what I know and what the planning, planning commission has done previously, you know, I do have some concerns about having a separate document in the zoning code, but that's the consensus of the planning commission, you know, we do it in the historic preservation district. And remind me, Jason, is that also in the zoning code, or is it a separate?
It's in the zoning.
The historic preservation district guidelines are a part of the zoning code?
No, they're not.
They're not, that's what I thought.
They are separate.
They are separate, okay. It recognizes that.
It references them?
References it, so, so just from where I'm coming from, since this is in the zoning code, I felt like I was a little bit uneasy as having a separate set of design review guidelines, because essentially what we're doing is, we're, you know, anytime you go to the planning commission, we're essentially, we could potentially change what the zoning code is. Now, if that's what the consensus is, and that's what we want to send to the council, then, then I'm fine with that, but that was just some of my concerns that I had about it overall.
Well, I mean, I don't want to get too far afield, but the, last year, or I guess, yeah, last year, the Economic Development Authority did a survey, went and talked to some of the larger employers.
Right.
And, and you may have seen that, I don't know, but one of the things that they mentioned had to do with the historic area in terms of economic development, that it was inconsistent, and there were areas, obviously, within the historic district where guidelines were applied and areas where they were not. That was, that was mentioned, I think we interviewed 12 people, and that was mentioned by seven or eight in terms of, you know, the.
But do you think the inconsistency came from, like, my concern is, I agree with you, if you have these guidelines, but then the planning commission can change them from time to time, does that not lead to the inconsistency? And that's, that would be my counter.
That's, that's the question, I think.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, that's, when you look at, at one of the issues with the Meadows, there was a statement that there was inconsistency. Now, I think that was a confusion between what document controlled, whether it was the agreement between the town and the developer, which the town attorney said controlled, or...
Yeah, because we were a party to it, which, I have my opinions on whether or not that the town should have been a party to restrictive governance, but it is what it is.
Yeah, well, and that's the thing, but there was some confusion, and I guess the one thing that I think you want leeway, but I am concerned a little bit about consistency, because frankly, I think that when you look at the historical district more than other areas of town, some of the inconsistencies are pretty clear.
Right.
And I, you know, that would be a concern to me, that we would leave our, what I, what I hope doesn't happen is that we don't leave ourselves open to criticism, we need to, I guess, have some leeway, but I, I hope that the leeway doesn't lead to criticism. We need to, I guess, have some leeway, but I, I hope that the leeway doesn't lead to criticism of when we tend to use it, if that makes sense.
Well, I think that the guidelines that we have here though are still general enough to where even if we adopt them, it's not like if, even though if they're part of the code, to me it seems like, this is just my opinion. I mean, I think you've, we've covered the main things. We've eliminated some of these streets that we've said are not in the overlay district. And it's gotten a little bit more descriptive, which could help eliminate some of that. In some areas we've gotten more descriptive, specifically with the color, which could help us avoid some of those inconsistencies. It kind of cuts both ways.
Yeah.
Because the ordinance is very vague. And so it's been some, in parts of it, as it's currently written right now. So you guys have been trying to interpret it in the way you feel it, so it's not necessarily your fault because it's also provided a lot of leeway because there's a lot of, there's some silent sections in the code and so it's really up to your interpretation. So it's kind of a double edged sword, whereas if we put the guidelines in place as a separate document and then we maybe have to make some changes from time to time, you could say, well, you know, there's inconsistencies. Whereas if you put them in the code, if they're not detailed enough, then that leads to some more subjectivity, which is what we had before. And that could also lead to inconsistencies. But I think the format we have here is pretty... I, I think it's better than what we have, so. I mean, I'm, I'm open for either one, I mean, it's a, we still have to have the regular public hearing. We still have to conduct the public hearing for this. So does the planning commission right now, do we have to make a recommendation now? Or does that, that comes with the public hearing?
Comes with the public hearing, yeah.
So...
This is just more for, if there's anything in there that you do have heartburn about, let's go ahead and get that hashed out now. So when I bring it back before you in August, it will be a public hearing. That way you know what you're looking at, get you a final draft of what you're actually going to be...
Let me, let me ask you this, Jason. Since we've all, obviously gotten, you know, two versions here, they essentially do the same thing, other than they give the planning commission for one version, if we have a separate set of review guidelines. It gives us, gives the planning commission a little bit more leeway and more authority for design guidelines. Would it not be proper to maybe bring both versions to the work session? Because the council wants to hear a report on this. So what I was hoping to do is maybe bring this to the next work session before we have the public hearing, to get some feedback from the council, because this is a pretty big change, especially when we're eliminating these, these streets and it's something that they've really wanted to take some action on. So, you know, I wondered if maybe, I can, I can, we can express to them, here's what the preferences of the planning commission, the preferences, at least as it stands right now, to have the separate set of review guidelines. And they would pretty much be the same and get that, and get the council's feedback. And then when we do the public hearing at the next meeting in August, we could, Jason and I could, or Jason could, maybe as a staff person, could maybe communicate some of the feedback that the council had and we could decide as the body if we want to adopt the version with the separate guidelines or if we want to change anything else based on their feedback. Does that sound like an acceptable course of action? Since we don't have to actually take a formal position right now, if we have a public hearing, okay.
Any questions, concerns, what do you, what is there my thing?
I think that would be the most appropriate action is to combine, you know, the two. To make it much easier for overview.
And the roads have been stricken, the ones that are proposed to be coming out?
Correct. Yeah, and that's what, and I don't remember if we discussed this when we met before the planning commission meeting. I was, we were just giving him a, I did your job while you were gone.
Thank you.
But I told, no, we just, we sat down with...
Mr. Rolls.
Mr. Rolls. Your son, you know, I forgot your name. It just kind of gave him a little bit of a summary of what the planning commission does and I told him we were working on this. And the reason why we had stricken some of these roads were that they were not arterial roads per the state code. So all the ones that are left on here are arterial streets as designated by the Virginia Department of Transportation. So these other ones are not, and that's why they were stricken, so. So you could see there was a lot, there was a lot of them on it that were not.
Yeah, there were.
Dead more.
Just by every street out.
Yeah. I mean, I say this, they made, took like every main street that was kind of like in between Valley and Maine sort of along. And I understand why, you know, why, Valley is a highly traveled road. But people really take it, now, part of Valley's already in the historic district.
Yeah.
And so that's the difference. Because it's already in the historic district, the overlay district, because that's more strict than the overlay district limits, yeah.
And it, you know, I mean, I can remember why this was done. It was done to, basically to keep Walmart out of town at exit 14. And so it was basically, it was done as a, then there was a lawsuit ultimately.
Was that, so Walmart, that would have been on Jonesboro, is that what that would have been on?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, so, and the one thing that, I mean, again, going back to the issue with the Meadows, one thing if you adopt this would do that, that the Meadows itself would not be on a, on an arterial road, so this wouldn't cover the Meadows anyway once it's adopted.
Well, we talked about that though. Because based on what the covenants say, because the town is, is, is a party to that, some of the guidelines in the historic district overlay were incorporated into those restrictive covenants.
Right, but I mean...
Right, right, correct. If, if there was a new business that opened up adjacent to the Meadows or a new piece of property that was being developed and it wasn't in that footprint of the restrictive covenants, then yes, we would not be able to apply the, these guidelines to it, yeah. And there's still question whether or not the planning commission as a body should be the one held to a set of restrictive covenants. And to me, that's more of the town council's job to enforce, but I think everybody here has acknowledged that they exist and they have been trying to follow it. So as the next development, or the next parcel was to be developed in the Meadows, you know, I think you said it earlier, and you had asked, Jason, does this mean, I think everybody is still cottons into that and they want to see those, those guidelines followed. But as the planning commission, you know, if you decided, hey, this is not in the historic district overlay, we shouldn't have to, we shouldn't have to enforce it. So these restrictive covenants, that's something for the, for the town council to enforce. But, but I think we, we, I don't think that's the position that we're taking. I think the position that we've been taking is that we need to follow and comply with, with the restrictive covenants. And I think the developer expects that too.
Yes.
So why, why make an issue of it?
Well, and I think that's the question to ask because, you know, ultimately you make, it does, if the town's entered into that agreement, it meets those guidelines.
Right.
There had been some debate about what that was, but now that we know that that's the issue, you ask the issue, the question's answered, you really should...
Right.
Adhere to it.
That should take care of it.
And it'll make for a better development, I don't dispute that, yeah.
I agree.
Additional questions, concerns for Mr. Boswell? Is it, is it the commission's view to agree with, to agree with Mr. Morani said? And that is basically to show both of these to the council, let them review it in, before there's a public hearing?
Before we bring it back here to do a public hearing.
And the public hearing would be before the planning?
Yes, sir. Yep, it'd be just like a normal public hearing. You'll make the decision based off of the information that we've provided and then make your recommendation to the town council.
Now, when we do a public hearing, would it make sense to have one version of the amended ordinance? Or the, the ordinance amendment to zoning code? Or do we come back when we do, when you've conducted public hearings? Because if they're going to be the ones deciding on what to do, is it typical just to present, here is the proposed amendment to the ordinance? And if we bring this to the work session and there's some, maybe there's a disagreement, maybe they think, what if the town council says, we would like to keep it all in together into one and not have a separate set? Since we haven't brought that back to the planning commission, what, what do we do then at that public hearing?
I think you, I think you, I think you stick with both and I think the planning commission...
So can we do that? So can we, we could, as long as, because the public notice is going to say revisions to the, this section of the zoning ordinance, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The public agenda doesn't have to have the...
We don't have to have, you will have to have one single proposal.
You just, you just tell public which section.
Which section we're amending. And I mean, we've been very transparent, we've had, as I've had it in the third meeting we've had on it, so.
I'll say you give them the final draft.
So here's some feedback we've got from the town council.
I think that from the town council and from the planning commission.
Yeah, okay.
The question, the next, you do this, it's time for public, that's now. And what the discussion is, they have their input, their own systems, to turn whatever.
Correct.
Now, do we, the planning commission have to vote at that meeting to adopt one of these as...
Or you can add anything to it if you want to.
Well, that's, I mean, let's say, for argument's sake, say there is a fair number of public, from the public. There are different issues that are discussed. I guess I don't, are we necessarily required at that meeting to decipher all that, make a decision at that meeting, or can we do it at a subsequent meeting? I guess if there's a lot of discussion and a lot of suggested changes and if some of those changes actually...
Right.
I'm probably more paranoid.
Yeah, my, my position would be, yes, we do. I mean, the town council says, hey, we want a response within 60 days and I think we satisfy that by bringing this to them. If we go to the work session and I, we can tell, Jason can tell them at the work session, hey, if we have to conduct the public hearing and there are a lot of comments that the town or that the planning commission needs to incorporate it, we can tell them it's possible, it could take... I just think they want to see things move forward. I don't think their concern is a drop dead day because they knew this was going to take some time. But that's something that, that Jason can, can explain to them at the, at the next work session. Because I would rather not do it right the first time and wait a month if we have to, based on another comment than to rush something through.
Yeah, you know, in other words, if you've got, you say you have 20 comments and some of them actually are at odds with each other.
Yeah.
But that would just, I, I want to have the, the ability to say, okay, we're going to do it at the next meeting or a called meeting, even if we had to do that.
Yeah, and the town council can't prevent us from doing that, otherwise they can't hold us in contempt, so. They can't say, what we told you?
Yeah, if you, if you...
I understand.
If they do, again, I think it would be Wayne that would go to jail, would that be...
Probably, we would lock him up. Yeah, we would lock him up, yeah. No, I think that's totally appropriate. I mean, I think everybody wants good public policy, nobody wants to rush it.
Yeah, you don't, don't feel rushed, Mr. Schuman, if you can't collect...
I mean, I may be overstating that, there may not be much said, but you just don't know.
But if you think you, you have a, we have a good base here for a, for a good set of guidelines that's going to help the planning commission in the future approve it and send it on to the council. If not, then we can do what...
And there could be feedback from the council that we have to discuss, that might take more time, that we might seemingly come back for one more meeting afterwards, but.
Everybody okay with doing that?
I agree. I mean, you may have a, like you said, a good possibility of several folks coming to speak and with differing opinions, it might lead to more...
Well, and because of some of the issues with PALS, the, you know, the more, the more people who come and feel like they've been heard, the better off we're going to be, you know, going down the road, I think.
Right, right. I mean, I think the only thing that this would affect if we didn't enact it sooner than later is if somebody who was in one of these areas came to obtain a certificate of appropriateness. But in the next two months, I don't know if that will happen because we've already just said that we're going to apply those standards to the Meadows development, which is what we basically did with this Pizza Hut, so. I don't think anything's really going to change in the Meadows development, but it could be another piece of property, which would be on these streets. But that may or may not happen over the next two months.
Hopefully, it's possible to have. Hopefully it gets amended and get these roads, these collector roads off before, before anything else were to happen.
Yeah, because I, I mean, to me, that's the biggest issue. You can't, I mean, these aren't arterial roads.
Well, there's even question whether or not us as a town would, would be required, you know, as town staff and the town's attorney's opinion and my opinion is that if we did get something that wasn't an arterial road, it's questionable whether or not we should even forward it to this body. But that becomes a legal question and we'll cross that bridge when it comes. Hopefully this will just be adopted before that needs to happen, so.
We'll keep our fingers close.
Yeah.
Any, any additional discussion questions? All right, thank you. The next order of business is old, old business not on the agenda. Does anybody have anything to bring up that's not on the agenda?
Do you want to talk about the initiation for the new planning commission members? Have they taken everybody out to dinner afterwards and buy dinner?
No, what's this?
You weren't at the meeting when I did it.
This is, no.
That's been a long time roll.
Well, I just heard buy dinner and it's... Any other announcements or any other business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
They can do it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you guys.